Alrighty, good evening. The time is 6:02. This is the March 17th, 2022 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our first order of business is to recess into work session to review the cases. We'll reconvene as in the regular session at around 6:30. So with that, time is 6:03. We'll convene to work session. Alright, are we on?
Yes.
Okay, so we're now in work session. I guess our first order of business is to call the roll. Please respond by saying here. Commissioner Haas, here. Commissioner Portman?
Here.
Commissioner Blankenship?
Here.
Commissioner Bishop?
Here.
Commissioner Guerra?
Here.
Commissioner Mauer?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Alright, I'll turn the work session over to staff members Matt Steer and Mary Proon Boswell to review the cases.
Good evening, everyone. So Matt and myself are here. We have Kami McGee who's going to be taking minutes as the secretary, PNC secretary. Just to kind of go over the three items that we have on the agenda tonight. I'll let Matt do the first one since he has the first item.
Okay, the first item was the Pecan Hollow Drive setback variance retest. So typically, if it's a special needs case, they go through the Board of Adjustment. But because this neighborhood was part of a plan development, they had to come through P&amp;Z City Council a full zoning process. So in meeting with the owner, he had said that his daughter had gotten into an accident, a serious car accident, and she was, you know, made a quadriplegic. And so for mobility and accessibility needs, they needed to modify their residence. So they were awarded a specific amount of money for renovations to their home. And actually, the contractor was already paid about $25,000 to prepare their plans and submit for a permit. When they submitted for a permit, we realized, uh-oh, they have to go through another process. So we explained it to them. The city attorney reached out to Ken Paxton's office, spoke with someone down there, and got an extension to their payment sort of situation. So we're trying to rush this through the process. So I put them on this agenda. And so anyway, hopefully, he's here to tell you a little bit about how the case transpired, that sort of thing. But ultimately, your action is, it's a setback request, setback variance request. Originally, they came in with a 16-foot rear yard setback. We convinced them to push their building back to 18 and a half feet so they can at least fit a car in their driveway before getting into their garage. So they've made some modifications to their plans. I'll go through that with you out there, but that's essentially the case.
Any reason to say no to this?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, not at all.
Doesn't set any precedence or anything?
No.
To worry about?
No.
If this would have gone to the Board of Adjustments, because it wasn't a PD, this wouldn't be an issue at all, right?
It wouldn't be an issue with the Board. I assume they'd pass it right off the bat.
Okay. Have you had other requests similar to this at the Board of Adjustments?
We have at the Board of Adjustment level, but I haven't been to any of those cases, so yeah.
So when the contractor was paid, how did the contractor not know at that point, before the plans were completed, there was the setback issue?
That they'd need to come through? I have no idea. But yeah, they've got the same contractor. Hopefully, he'll be here to answer, you know, your questions. But, you know, he was really good to work with. You know, he's made the modifications, even widened the garage per Mary's request because they came in with a 20-foot wide garage that is kind of typical, you know, and you need a wider garage for, you know, the special vehicle. So they've made those modifications. So he seems pretty reasonable to work with.
Sure.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. Then the next two items are related. The first is the PD, and the second one is the plat that goes along with the PD. It's for the, it used to be Capell Middle School West, which is now the Capell Ninth Grade Center. They're looking to add a locker room building over by the baseball and softball fields. So it's a 2,800-square-foot building. It's going to have change room for softball, baseball, as well as the referees, and I think a little bit of storage in there as well. So it's going where there's currently, close to the concession stand. It's going to be in the existing grassy area. So they'll just be moving some fences that are there currently. They'll be extending some sidewalks from the concession to the building and to the parking lot area. There's 629 parking spaces already on the site, so they're not adding any more parking. Essentially, just putting this building there. The building is going to match other buildings on-site. It's got a standing C metal roof. It's a two-colored building with, you know, a little bit of architectural details. It's got some stropping through it. And they are going to have a sign on the building. So there's a long and a short side to the building. The signage is going to be on the short side, but it's based off of the long side.
So it's going to seem really big or full?
Well, it's going to, yeah. So because that's going to be, I guess, the first thing that you see when you're walking towards the locker room area. So we were...
So how do you measure the signage requirement on a building that's within a bunch of buildings on the site?
Well, you just took that building there.
Just that building?
Right. So it's like we did with Hat Creek Burger, I think, where we didn't just take the front of the building. We measured the long side and gave them, you know, some additional signage based on the long, because it's more like a shotgun style building.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, with multiple buildings?
Yeah, it's all interior to the site. So it's not even going to be visible, you know, if you're driving down the road.
It's a private drive anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
So essentially, there's no parking changes or anything like that. It's just a new building. And then the last item is the plat to go along with that. So they'll be plating that lot because it's not platted. That will include easements to be dedicated by this plat, as well as any right-of-way, there's some right-of-way dedication along Wrangler. Pretty straightforward.
Who designed the building? Is it school district?
They had an architect.
Yeah, they have an architect.
Corrigan, maybe? I just saw it.
Yeah, Corrigan, I think.
Yeah.
Corrigan Associates.
So they have people that do all their stuff. So like the engineer does all of their CISD, they do LISD. So they're familiar with all the different campuses.
Yeah, you don't recognize Robert Howman? He's out there. He's done the majority of the CISD stuff.
Okay.
Did he do the fence, the middle school north?
I think so. At least a lot of art. I think he did the compromise that, yeah. The one where they came through the process.
I think that was before you, Cindy. You were on, right?
Yes.
That's before my time, yes.
But you probably saw the whole fence thing.
Check with the razor wire top and...
Keep those people off the field.
By golly, they're not going to get over there.
So is there any existing, any other existing outstanding issues with anywhere on the property that...
They're not complying to?
Not that I'm aware of.
Order.
You know, they updated their site plan to show the temporary buildings that are no longer there, so that's all updated.
I will ask them a question about the, I just was looking at the floor plan, and the baseball is twice as big as the softball. 50 lockers versus 30 lockers. And I just want them to explain, that's all.
Yep, I told them that you'd be asking that.
Yeah. Where's the equity kind of thing?
I'll let them answer that.
And then, I mean, why is it that the officials, and the official's restroom is on the ladies' side or the softball side, and one put on the baseball side? Flip it. There's no bias here, I'm just asking a question, that's all. Just, I mean, 1,000 square feet versus 770 square feet?
How large are the teams?
Well, for my brief...
This is Ninth Grade Center.
For my brief discussion with them, Howard, or Robert, just outside, the boys' teams are a lot bigger than the girls' teams.
Just from participation, or is it because...
I don't want to talk out of context, so I'll let them answer that. So maybe there's more boys' and boys' teams than girls' teams, participants.
So like an A, B, and C team for baseball, and an A and a B for softball?
Juniper. You know, that is not part of the purview though, right?
Oh, I know, I'm just asking a general question. We're entitled to ask questions about the, about the case.
Right, once you open up a PD, it's, oh, open up.
There could be a traffic concern. You know, we have more lockers here, going to generate traffic. No optics.
And boys drive more crazy than girls.
I will not dispute that.
Okay. And then, just an update on the City Council items. Are you guys okay to move forward? So March 8th, Matt took to City Council the TRK Trinity River High, the sign with the noble letters. That was approved by council. And then we're talking about setting up a meeting. We're looking at different dates and times, but potentially maybe mid-April. We had our Boards and Commissions joint meeting with the mayor, kind of breakfast type of thing. We talked about the SMART Board, FORWARD Board, and the P&amp;Z getting together and just kind of going over what we're all looking at and cases and, you know, policies moving forward and where we all stand. So we're looking at a joint meeting with those three boards. We're just looking at dates, possibly mid-April. But we'll be sending something out to you to see, you know, what makes sense to everybody.
Will it be virtual or in person?
At this point, I don't know. I would assume in person, but I don't think anything's been decided. And then, one other thing that's going to be happening is for all the different boards and commissions, I think they're going to be, we're going to be able, we're going to be sending to the City Secretary's office kind of like a brief synopsis, almost like a minutes kind of thing, just to kind of say, hey, you know, the Boards of Planning and Zoning Commission met on this date, and these are the kind of the cases we discussed. Just to kind of, it'll go out to different departments or boards and so just so you can see what's happening.
Yeah, what all the boards are doing, right?
It seemed like there was a summary, but I can't remember which publication it was. Some of there was one done before. Was it part of the City News or...
Okay, yeah, and that's exactly what they're talking about. You don't want us to put it together.
Oh, so maybe it was then, it was only P&amp;Z, the council, and they were doing all the boards? Good.
Yeah. And that way you know, you can see what everybody's doing.
Right. The other item that we talked about in our last meeting, where they took the two plats and replanted into three, did that go before City Council?
No.
Oh, doesn't have to?
Correct. That ends at P&amp;Z.
We took care of that one.
Yeah. So yeah, plats typically will end with your decision. And then they just need to, you know, pay their fees, impact fees, park fees, whatever other things they have, and then it gets filed.
Okay.
So Mary, on the Ninth Grade Center, I may have misread this, but in the staff summary, was the property never platted?
Correct.
Because it expired a few times?
Right, so they've gone through a process and had not...
Just never filed it?
And just never filed it.
Okay.
That was the original high school, right?
It was, I thought it was middle school.
It was middle school.
Originally, it was before that, that's right.
Yeah, but a long, long time ago, yeah. And they've still got Buddy Apple's Field there.
Your parents went to there?
Yeah.
Did you go to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that's not too long ago, though.
So you're a second-generation Capell?
Probably third or fourth.
Wow!
Really?
Yeah. She's...
Wow!
My parents were my mom. I think she knows like everybody.
So you know all the real stories. Yeah.
Yeah. That's it. So next month, we are expecting quite a few things coming in. So we'll find out Monday for sure is our pre-submittal. But yeah, so expect to be here a little while next month.
Pizza?
Yeah, for sure. So one other thing.
Pizza, yes.
If you guys have a topic you want to discuss during the joint meeting, email us, and we can make sure that's on the agenda.
Okay. When do you have to have those booked?
I'm not absolutely sure, but probably a week before the meeting. So yeah, get them to us in two weeks. That should be okay, right?
So we're going to hear maybe a potentially controversial one in the carports next month? Can we talk about this now or not?
It's not on the agenda.
Can't give us an advance?
Not sure.
Okay.
Is that April 21st?
Ish.
Yes.
What?
The next meeting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Third Thursday.
Speaking of, I thought you were talking about the joint meeting.
Yeah. It should be the 21st.
Okay.
Sounds worth it.
And then isn't there the appreciation function, like in the first part of April?
Yeah, volunteer appreciation sometimes.
What is that?
It's like the...
It's April 6th.
It is the 6th.
Yeah.
It's usually a fun deal, all the food trucks are out.
It's a Wednesday. Yeah, 6 o'clock. And then they got the pickleball thing on Saturday.
Shucks.
At White Oil.
Anyone playing pickleball?
I have before.
It's fun. It's a riot.
I love pickleball.
It's an absolute riot, yeah.
I agree.
I'm playing tennis, and I hear all the fun going on over there. I'm like, what's going on over there? We're having more fun.
But didn't you say you have to play tennis? If you're going to play both, you have to play tennis first?
Well, last Sunday, I did pickleball practice with our team, and then we had a tennis match. That was not fun. So, you know, after some warm-up or I'm spraying, I'm spraying balls everywhere. I just start hitting them against the fence because we don't have a backboard anymore. So just so I can get the, oh, man. So it messes up your tennis game. Don't do it back-to-back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Why does he have a backboard?
Okay. I guess. Yeah, we're early. Okay. Well, I guess we have a few minutes to go take a quick break before we start. So 6:22, and we'll dismiss the work session and convene in regular session at 6:30.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. No rush.
Okay, the time is 6:32 and the planning and zoning commission will reconvene into general session. All the members of the commission are present. Item four on the agenda is citizens' appearance. If there's any person wishing to speak on any matter other than any scheduled agenda item, must sign the register in the back listing the address, name, residence, and location. Each speaker would have up to two minutes to, to present on any particular case, not on the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on anything other than on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to item five on the agenda. That's the approval of our February 17th meeting, the meeting minutes. Is there a motion by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the meeting of February 17, 2022 of the Capell Planning and Zoning Commission be approved as written.
We have a motion by Commissioner Portman. Is there a second?
I second.
Second, Commissioner Guerra. Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please respond by saying iron eyes, I call your name. Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerra?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
None opposed, all approved. Motion carries.
So, item seven. Looks like we have an, item six. Looks like a little down order.
We have a little typo.
Yeah, it's six. Okay. Item six on the agenda is a public hearing to consider approval of PD-113R-SF-9, Lot 5, Block A, Pecan Valley. A zoning change request from plan development number 113 Single Family-9 to Plan Development 113 Single Family-9 revised. A revised site, a revised planned development to allow for a 16-foot rear setback for a building addition to support special accommodations for a disabled resident on 8,400 square feet of property located at 416 Pecan Hollow Drive at the request of Dr. John Ibeque? Hopefully I didn't, okay. Being represented by Ed Gifaro of Brilliant Homeworks. Staff presentation by Matt Steer. Matt?
Mr. Chairman, good, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, good evening. This is item number six on your agenda. It is your first public hearing. The property is zoned, Plan Development 113 SF-9. The zoning was approved in September 1990. The preliminary plat was approved in December of that year for the Pecan Valley addition. This request is to revise the required rear yard setback from the required 20 feet to 18 feet 8 inches for the conversion of the existing garage into living accommodations for a resident with special needs. A new, slightly wider garage is proposed to be added to accommodate the specialized vehicle for the resident. And this type of addition would typically go through the permitting process without the need for a zoning action. But because it encroaches into the required 20-foot rear yard setback, it does require an amendment to the Plan Development District. So here's their, their addition. And here's their site plan. Staff has worked with the applicant to amend the original setback request from 16 feet to 18 feet 8 inches. Enough room for a car to park in the driveway. The garage addition has also been increasing width from 20 feet with the original submittal to 25 feet to better serve the accessibility needs. And staff is supportive of this change and can recommend approval. We did send out notices within, or 39 notices within 200 feet to surrounding property owners, and one was returned in favor. And then 261 courtesy notices were sent out within 800 feet. We did receive an email, not, not sure if it was within the 200 or 800 feet. But they did state that they, they did not feel the work would be completed to a minimum standard required by city and county ordinances and thought that it would negatively affect neighboring property values. I tried to reach out to them for additional information, to no avail. Staff is recommending approval of PD-113R-SF-9 subject to the following condition. That additional comments be, may be generated upon detailed building permit review. That concludes my, my presentation. The applicant is not in the audience, so I'll try and address any questions that you may have.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Matt. Any questions of staff by the commission? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against the proposed application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commission? Is there a motion by the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of PD-113R-SF-9 subject to the staff condition.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Portman. Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please respond by saying iron eyes, I call your name. Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerra?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
All approved, none opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Matt. Alrighty, item seven on the agenda is a public hearing to consider approval of PD-289R-C, Capell Ninth Grade Center Locker Room Building. A zoning change request from Plan Development 289 Commercial to Plan Development 289 Revised Commercial to revise the planned development to allow for 2,800 square foot locker room on 51.59 acres of property located at 1301 Wrangler Circle at the request of Capell ISD, being represented by Glenn Engineering. We have a staff presentation by Ms. Mary Peron Boswell. Mary?
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. This item, this property is located at the southwest quadrant of Wrangler Drive and Crestside Drive. So what they are proposing, this is kind of the overall site plan. As you can see, it's roughly around 50 acres or so. This is a 2,800 square foot locker room addition, which is outlined in the blue and identified in yellow. So this 2,800 square foot locker room will be located close to the concession stands. There's already existing parking on-site of approximately 629 parking spaces. They will be building some additional sidewalk in front of the locker room area to connect to the existing sidewalks, as well as patching up some sidewalk, or new sidewalk closer to the parking area. There's no changes in the amount of parking. This new locker room will house change rooms for softball as well as for baseball and the referees, as well as provide some additional storage. The only other changes they're looking at is to move some of the chain link fences that exist there currently. There's no landscaping changes proposed. In terms of the building itself, it's a rather narrow building, but long. So it's 18 feet 10 inches in height. The primary building color will be pink ruby, split face with two horizontal lines and an Austin limestone split face to match the existing buildings on-site. The roof will be a charcoal gray standing seam metal roof. There will be some signage on the building, which will consist of the Capell Cowboy Star logo with the words Capell ISD Baseball and Softball Complex written in 18-inch cast aluminum letters, brushed stainless. The signage for the building will be approximately 67 square feet and a sign permit will be required for the signage. So that signage was based on the longer area of the building versus the, the shorter area. So we did send out notices within 200 feet and within 800 feet. A total of 17. We received no responses. And staff is recommending approval of PD-289R-C, Capell Ninth Grade Center Locker Room Building, subject to the following conditions. One, that the signage be approved as shown, and two, that a sign permit will be required. That is the end of my presentation. The applicant and their engineer is also available for questions.
Thank you, Mary. I think I missed it. You said on one of the slides there's chain link fence. Where is that?
They're just adding some chain link fence to
Oh.
To kind of
Gotcha, yeah.
Tie into what's already there. So they're just taking down some and then repositioning it to accommodate the new building.
Any questions of staff by the commission? Okay, is the applicant here to present the case? Is there anything you'd like to add? Only because you came all the way over. If I could get your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Robert Howman with Glenn Engineering. We're located at 4,500 Fuller Drive, Irving, Texas. I'm here on behalf of Capell Independent School District and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you, hold on, hang on, hang on, hang on. I do have a question for you. Are you in agreement with the conditions?
We are in support, yes, sir.
I did have a general question regarding the size of the programs, the baseball and softball program. How big are the two at the Ninth Grade Center?
Oh, oh, the district.
Okay, sure.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Womack. I'm the chief operating officer for Capell Independent School District, 1303 Wrangler Circle in Capell, Texas. And this particular building will serve more than just the Ninth Grade Center. It will actually serve our nine through 12 baseball and softball program. We typically average about 70 male athletes on the baseball side and about 40 female athletes on the softball side. So the, the dimensions of those spaces are to provide 90 lockers on the baseball side and 60 lockers on the softball side to not only maintain the, the program, but allow a little bit of extra room for any growth in years that, that they may have.
Okay, that was, as I looked at just the floor plan, I saw the baseball was much bigger than the softball. And I thought, well, why isn't it a little more equal in size? But then I figured there was probably on the program, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against the proposed application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commission? Is there a motion by the commission?
Make a motion for the approval of PD-289R-C, Capell Ninth Grade Center Locker Room Building with the stipulated conditions, sir.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Guerra. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mauer. Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please respond by saying iron eyes, I call your name. Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerra?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
All approved, none opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Item eight on the agenda is to consider approval of the Ninth Grade Centered Lot 1, Block A Final Plat, being a plat of Lot 1, Block A to create a lot and associated easements on 51.73 acres of land located on the south side of Wrangler Drive, perpendicular to Enterprise Drive at the request of Capell ISD, being represented by Glenn Engineering. We have a staff presentation by Ms. Mary Peron Boswell. Mary?
Yes, Chairman. So this is a companion item to the PD request that we just heard. It's a simple plat request. So the building is, will be located close to the ball fields. The plat will simply plat the property since it has not been platted. Within this plat, we do have a five-foot right-of-way dedication along Wrangler Drive. And we do require that all fire lanes and easements be platted as well. So the fire lanes are identified in red. And there's some additional easements shown on the plat that will be dedicated by this plat. So staff is recommending approval of Capell Ninth Grade Center Lot 1, Block A Final Plat, subject to the following conditions. One, that additional comments may be generated upon detailed engineering permit reviews.
Very good, Mary. Thank you. Any questions of staff by the commission?
I just, one question. Any reason to believe that this one would not be filed?
Not to my knowledge.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay. But before it, it was never filed?
Correct.
What?
It expired.
Any?
I don't know.
Just someone forgot to do that? Last item on the checklist that just didn't get done, or? It doesn't create any technical issues, does it?
No, we, we will make sure that they file it this time. Right, Rob? Right, Mr. Howman?
Otherwise, there might be a new engineer on staff, huh? All right, very good. Okay, thank you, Mary. Any other questions of, of staff by the commission? Okay, any discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, Chairman. I'll move to approve Capell Ninth Grade Center Lot 1, Block A Final Plat, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mauer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Blankenship. Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please respond by saying iron eyes, I call your name. Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Guerra?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bishop?
Aye.
All approved, none opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Get that plat filed, please. Alrighty, in pre-session, we reviewed the item nine on the agenda. That was the update on council action. I guess before we adjourn for our April 21st meeting, our next meeting, special thanks to Mary and staff for getting us our nice new shirts. Good luck. We had some pictures beforehand, so maybe we'll, we'll hit the website with it. But thank you very much for grabbing the shirts. Really enjoy them.
You're very welcome.
Okay, with that then, we'll, if there's no other announcements by staff or anything by the commission, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The time is 6:50 and this meeting is adjourned.